When you have 10 seconds to complete your comments, the red light indicates the end of three minutes. And we have five people signed up for this portion of the meeting tonight. So first up, we have Marka Benowitz, followed by Mary Salinas.
I was glad that the city recently helped bring Richard Heinberg, author of The End of Growth with the Post Carbon Institute, to Eugene. And it would be even nicer if the city could adopt some of the recommendations that Richard Heinberg and Post Carbon Institute have been promoting for many years. Here's a math question about exponential growth. If you have a jar that is full of a growth medium, and you have yeast that doubles every minute, and it takes 60 minutes, one hour, to fill up the jar, when is it half-full? At 59 minutes. Exponential growth is a mathematical concept that is at the root of our energy system and our financial system, and it can no longer continue now that we have reached, as long predicted, the limits to growth on a finite planet. One way the math on this is not factored in by local government. The Lane Council of Governments in 2004 predicted that oil would reach $2.50 a gallon by the year 2025. In other words, they were only off by 19 and 1/2 years. And this is the model for transportation, for economic policy, for everything that is the operating system of local government. If you use oil in Oregon for a car, a plane, train, a bus, or food delivery truck, you're using oil from the Alaska Pipeline. The Alaska Pipeline peaked in 1988; it has dropped by 2/3 since. You can see this on the Aliaska Pipeline website. If it drops another 20 to 30 percent, they will no longer be able to keep it flowing in the winter. What is the plan B when the oil tankers no longer come into Puget Sound from Valdez? What part of the world is going to give up their use of oil so that we can drive on Beltline and have food deliveries into our town? I've used solar power for over 20 years. It's great, especially on a day like today. But it's not going to replace the fossil fuel. It's very hard to store solar energy. Either it's electricity, or I have a solar hot water panel, and it's nice to use this time of year. But it's pretty useless in January, unfortunately. So we need to think about the energy limits that transcend political partisanship, and we need to change our psychology to recognize that the Earth is abundant and finite, and that exponential growth could not continue on a finite planet.
Mary Salinas is next, followed by Wendy Butler-Boyson.
My name's Mary Salinas. I live in Springfield, and I'm not aware of my ward. I think of you as -- you all look the same to me. I mean, I think you all have my leadership. I don't have any ideas about that. I speak for homelessness. I've been doing it for 13 years. I was homeless for 2 and 1/2 years. You're probably tired of hearing that. And I started speaking for the homeless soon after I became homeless, and I have continued for 13 years. I've been here for four years. I've spoken for the homeless here. I've worked my heart off here in Eugene for the homeless. So anyway, I came with my own math. I fit in tonight, I bet. I don't believe in homelessness, so I'm like the most positive person you're ever going to meet on the subject of homelessness. I have many relationships with the homeless. I've had many, many, many relationships with the homeless people now. And they're people. I was a little disappointed, quite frankly. They're just normal people, no better, no worse. Their circumstances are extreme. But we're human. No matter what happens, we just seem to be the same. So that was my experience. Also, I feel that they are like -- well, I'll talk a little bit. This is an article that was in the Register-Guard, April 8, 2012. It's called "Building Hope in the Barrio." This was a very long article in the Register-Guard. Very long. So this is serious. So Mr. -- this is a Eugene man. I'll speak as fast as -- a Eugene man who's now going to the Dominican Republic. After 10 years of hard work, he's figured out how to do it. He is removing a shanty town with new homes. He has designed two homes, one for $4,000, one for $6,500. It's got the works, the lift-off ground because of the rain, just like Eugene would need. So he can make a home for $4,000. He's just taking out a shanty town and proving it can be done, and every cent of this donated goes into the homes. No NGOs, nothing, just simplicity, which is my favorite thing. Okay, so Ron can build a home for $4,000 for a few people. That's probably will do most of the homeless. Capstone, I'm not against it, I'm not for it. That's not my comment. It's just architecture, as far as I'm concerned, and apartments. For $89 million, Capstone will build 359 units. And I'm sure that includes the price of the land. So I just did, you know, real simple math. For $89 million, you could build 22,000 homes. 22,250 homes for $89 million. And you've just combed the city. You know every inch of property right now. This is the time. You know which property could be converted into projects like that. And from everything -- ah!
Thank you.
They need to be integrated into the community, not Aslam.
Thank you.
Here, 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 here.
Thank you.
Yes, I'll be back. I have so much to say. Thank you.
Wendy Butler-Boyson is next, followed by Michael Todd.
Hi, I'm Wendy Butler-Boyson. I haven't been here to talk to you folks for a while. I live on City View Street. I think I'm in Counselor Brown's ward, but I can't really tell you that. I'm here to talk about the West Eugene MX that you probably haven't heard about a lot lately. They still haven't released that environmental impact statement report. But I, as some of you know, am a complete bus rider. My husband has been also, ever since his stroke 10 years ago. He also uses RideSource when I'm not around. And folks, we need the MX in West Eugene. The buses are packed. A couple of months ago, I was taking care -- took a day off, was taking care of my grandkids. We had to go someplace. I figured we'll ride the bus in the middle of the day when everybody's not going to school and they're not going to work. And guess what? We tried to get on the vet bus at City View to go downtown. I could not find three seats anywhere near each other on that bus. My husband and his cane sat in the front. I parked the five-year-old next to a middle school girl who viewed him as an alien from a foreign planet. And the baby and I sat in the back. That bus was packed at 11 o'clock in the morning. We need the West Eugene MX. We really do, folks. It's all day long. There's been -- there really have not been service cutbacks along my part of West Eugene because the '76 takes up part of what the '30 did. So we have the same frequency of buses, we have the same size of buses, and they are full to overflowing. People are riding. They're more than riding, they're standing while they ride. And this is not a healthy thing for somebody with a cane, such as my husband. And 10 years ago, he was 56 years old, and he was driving his car everywhere, and he never dreamed he was going to be dependent on public transit. But he is. And that's the future for many of us. And I just want to remind you that we're going to need that, and we need to plan for it now. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I call the next person, I just want to remind everybody that we try really hard to have this place be a safe place for everyone to speak, and for everyone to speak respectfully about and to everyone else. Michael Todd, you're next, followed by Devin Gates.
My name is Michael Todd, and I'm a resident of Eugene. My office is 710 -- in front of 710 Y Lamath at the Green Room. I know every one of the mom-and-pop business owners on that block, but you're henchmen. How dare they -- last April, or this past April, over in between Lucky's and Davis, you designate because these police officers, yet we call 911, oh, there's a 10 to 15, 20-minute wait for your officers. But yet, you can designate officers. I was sitting there having a torta sandwich. Officer Shuki came by me five times. I was having a torta sandwich. That's harassment, flat-blade. We're tired of it. We're human beings, but yet you condemn us to death? The AMA plainly states, "A person, a human being, or an animal who has not given adequate sleep will begin to go mentally insane and will die." How dare you give us a death sentence? But I know every one of the business owners, but yet, you know, I have to sit there because I'm safe. I go anywhere over there, or whatever. Officer Shuki's not even supposed to be on the streets after incident. But how dare you, you know, 911, you know, somebody's breaking into your house, and they say, "Oh, well, it'll be 10, 15 minutes before we get an officer out there." And yet you can sit there? And then I saw on the paper Wednesday, a couple weeks ago, you know, we're laying off 200 jobs. Thursday, you're giving away $8.5 million. And then later, a week later, I see your picture, Mayor Percy, your two incumbents and Osama bin Laden on the same page. What are we supposed to think? Even I can't -- even Dan Bryant can't get me back into the mission. I don't know which God that y'all -- you definitely, you know, every time -- I'm better off when I don't have your money. But yet, you overprice things to where -- I came here to be a resident, and this is how I'm treated? The 1st of May, which was my father's birthday, I had to go to court over something that I found I didn't want a child to have it. But over here, and Officer and Judge says, "You've got 12 against you." I says, "No, I got 10 against me, two were -- or actually, nine against me. Two were dropped, and the other one is pending." He says, and then I go over to Whitebird to get my check, and I have a letter from the city that states, "Oh, if I'm late on my D or my diversion payments, I've got a valid in North Carolina to 2016. I have no point." And when I come here, the 27th of May of last year, I have no criminal record. But now, but yet this judge says, "You've got 12 against you. One is pending, and two of them were dropped." But yet Rosa could ride the bus, and all charges against me were dismissed, and I can't even ride the bus. What kind of city do we live in? What kind of world is this becoming? Thank you.
Devin Gates is next, followed by Louisa Hammachek.
Good evening, council members. Devin Gates, I live in Eugene. I spoke here a week, two weeks ago, and obviously, this is in concern of the city housing code. Due to the recent fiasco of utilizing certain portions and not others, it's clear that we need to outsource this program to maintain impartiality and the ability for future review. The possible additions of energy efficiency, air infiltration, and appliances to the code not only goes beyond the original intent of the code, the scope of the code, but will have a very detrimental effect to tenants in the long term. I'm going to get back to that. Many people tend to think us landlords are wealthy, but most, including myself, simply sweat equity their way into this world. In our real estate rental market, we really have about a seven- to 10-year lag time before we hit a break-even point. What I mean by that is that three-bedroom, two-bath house that I can rent for $1,200, my mortgage is $1,500, $1,600 on. It takes a long time before we hit a break-even point, not to mention turnaround costs. So since energy efficiency and some of these other aspects you want to add to the code are going to affect nearly every household of than 10 to 15 years old, it's going to force a landlord to accrue large and outstanding costs. And eventually, we're just going to leave the game entirely. And you're going to see a mass exodus of landlords. It's too much work for too little payout. And it's simple. The law of supply dictates that when a shortage occurs, prices will rise substantially. And this is what we're going to end up seeing. Shall I remind you of oil and gas prices currently? This program in its current projection, I see as very self-serving and short-sightedness. Please consider outsourcing or bring back the four-year clause. Thank you.
Louisa Hammachek is next.
Hello, Mayor. This is Police Appreciation Week.
Would you introduce yourself first?
Oh, I'm Louisa Hammachek. I'm -- me? And I want to express my appreciation for the police system finding the punk kid who stole my truck. And they did great work at coming to my house and getting the information out. And so my truck is back to me, and I'm very glad. In two days, it worked. And I was very glad to have that friendly relationship with the police when then, right before May Day, I heard about homeless kids being arrested in a rough way under Ferry Street Bridge. And then other people concurred to tell me that homeless were being not allowed to camp, and that there's been a police crackdown on the camping. And I was asked to be on the mayor's task force for homeless solutions. And in the request for my attention, it said it was an emergency to deal with this situation, especially after the Occupy camp was no longer existent, to take care of the homeless situation. And so I was very glad to work on that, and I put many hours into that. And my feeling coming out of that was good, that we were agreed that homeless were not criminals, and they would not be treated roughly by the police for a time period as we developed a way to solve the problem of people who have not been able to pay for housing and have to camp out. And camping out should not be getting you a criminal record. And I was disappointed to hear that shortly after our good work, that you had allowed the police to start cracking down on camping out homeless again. And so I would like to ask for that. I have a few more minutes. I would like to ask that you don't arrest people for camping out right now. And then about our watershed, I went up to the Goose Timber Sale, and that's the upper watershed of the McKenzie, where our drinking water comes from. And it was beautiful, and I camped up there after everybody else had left. There was a tour of the Timber Sale to see about that. And it would be foolish of the City Council to not protect our watershed. It's not that big. I could hear the trucks down in the valley. It's not that big of a watershed, and it's all we got for our clean water. And if you cut those trees and allow those to go down, the mud will go down. It won't hold the water. We won't have enough water. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public forum, and thank everyone for coming and speaking to us, and ask council if they have any comments they'd like to make. Counselor Taylor?
Thank you. Thanks to everyone who came, but I want to especially thank Marka Benowitz for his common sense. Take my --
Okay. We're going to move on now to the consent calendar. Council President?
I move to approve the items on the consent calendar. The second?
Moved and seconded. I don't see anybody in the queue. Would you please vote on the consent calendar? Seven in favor and none in opposition. It passes. Thank you. So now, the next item on our agenda is the ratification of the Metropolitan Wastewater Management Commission. Assistant City Manager?
Tonight, we'll take action to ratify --
Thank you.
-- to ratify the proposed FY13 MWMC budget and capital improvements program by the City of Eugene. On April 13, the Metropolitan Wastewater Management Commission approved the FY13 Regional Wastewater Management Program Budget and Capital Improvements Program. Consistent with the intergovernmental agreement, the MWMC budget and CIP needs to be ratified by the governing bodies of Eugene, Springfield, and Lane County prior to adoption by MWMC. We have staff here from the Wastewater Division if you have questions.
If you have questions, okay. Thank you. You want to put the motion on the table?
Sure. I move to ratify the FY13 Metropolitan Wastewater Management Commission budget. Second?
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Questions? I don't see any, so I think you're ready to vote on it. Would you please vote? Seven in favor, none in opposition. It passes. So we're now ready for the public hearing on Envision Eugene. Thank you. Going to open the public hearing. And Assistant City Manager will introduce the topic.
As you know, the City Manager's recommendation on Envision Eugene has been available for the past two months, and it includes a proposed urban growth boundary and strategies to accommodate needed jobs, homes, parks, and schools over the next 20 years while balancing the seven pillars. We've engaged with our community in a broad conversation focused on creating a common vision and values for Eugene. Since presenting the recommendation to you in March, the public has had the opportunity to learn and share thoughts on Envision Eugene through seven community forums held around the city, as well as through an online survey. Tonight, you will be able to hear directly from the public what the vision means to them as we begin moving forward towards our best outcomes for Eugene's future. Staff will provide a summary of input received to date, including tonight's public hearing at your work session this Wednesday in preparation to begin discussing the recommendation.
Thank you. So those wishing to speak during the public hearing must have submitted a complete request to speak form to the information just prior to the beginning of the public hearing. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. Again, you have three minutes to comment, and there are lights on the podium. The yellow lights indicate you have 15 seconds to complete your comments. The red light means it's time to stop. So we have 24 people signed up. And first is Marka Benowitz, followed by Sean Bowles.
Everybody eats, at least everybody I've ever met. And protecting our food is going to be of critical importance as the cheap oil becomes expensive, difficult to get oil. This means protecting high-quality farm soils in Oregon is of critical importance. If you look at the Atlas of Oregon published by the U of O, you will see that Oregon has actually very little soil that is good to grow food in. It's hard to grow food in clay. It's hard to grow food in volcanic ash and basalt. It's only found in the river bottoms. That's where the best soil is in Oregon. This is precisely where the urban growth boundary expansion would be. The operating system for expand or envision Eugene assumes endless growth is good, physically possible, and something that everybody agrees on. But physical realities exist, whether political realities recognize them or not. You need to rethink how Eugene can possibly grow over the next 20 years after its oil supply goes away from the Alaska Pipeline no longer being there, even if the Arctic National Wildlife Refuge is drilled. It's only another billion barrels versus the 16 billion that have already flowed through the pipeline. This is a physical fact. It's not Democrat, it's not Republican, it's not liberal, conservative, or any other flavor. You need to involve farmers. You need to involve the counties. You need to involve people who are thinking about energy limits. We have one of the world's experts on peak energy in Eugene, retired professor Walter Youngquist. You need to include people like that in your discussion, rather than a bunch of developers and a couple of quasi-environmentalists, and maybe one or two voices who actually want to talk about the limits to growth. Smart growth would have made sense in 1950, but it's too late for that now. We've passed the limits to growth. In 1972, MIT had a study done called "The Limits to Growth." It was one of the first computer models ever drawn up to do this. They found that after the turn of the century, we would start to exhaust the physical resources that industrial civilization is based on. And the most interesting thing in the model they found is that no matter how they tweaked the assumptions, if you doubled the amount of available resources, it didn't change the outcome because of exponential growth. So I don't have the slightest doubt that this is going to get rubber-stamped and run through, because building more suburbs where the developers don't even know which way the sun goes for passive solar design is popular and profitable, and wafer board houses are still allowed. But if you're thinking of the future and future generations, you need to think about how Eugene in 2030 is going to feed itself.
Next is Sean Bowles, followed by Mia Nelson.
Sean Bowles, speaking as a private citizen. I'm a citizen of Eugene. I live in Ward 7. My comments are informed by my service as a member of the Envision Eugene Community Resource Group, as co-chair of the Technical Resource Group charged with vetting the Envision Eugene assumptions, and as a member of the City Sustainability Commission. I speak first to two of the critical pillars in Envision Eugene, followed by specific comments on the housing mix and industrial expansion elements of the current proposal. The two pillars to which I will speak are Pillar 3, Plan for Climate Change and Energy Uncertainty, and Pillar 7, Provide for Adaptive, Flexible, and Collaborative Implementation. With respect to Pillar 3, global warming is real. It's here, and we need to deal with it. I know that some members of the council and community do not see this as a problem. If you are among them, you owe it to yourself and your fellow citizens to examine the evidence. The time for willful ignorance and active denial is long past. Do not be paralyzed by impending change. Exercise the power entrusted to you by the community to support city staff in acting responsibly and rapidly at municipal, and I emphasize, a regional level, to implement Envision Eugene in the context of the Climate and Energy Action Plan, which you've already adopted. These two documents provide a framework for development that can be beautiful, efficient, and sustainable. With respect to Pillar 7, unless we have a mechanism to obtain feedback about the consequences of our decisions and our ability to adjust accordingly, Envision Eugene is likely to be just another failed planning effort that is ignored in the day-to-day thinking of council and staff. Please ensure the resources to operationalize this pillar are not given short shrift. A successful implementation of Pillar 7 concepts will provide a legacy of thoughtful and responsive government extending well beyond your tenure. So now on to specific comments about Envision Eugene recommendations. The housing mix. I would urge you to reverse the recommendation of 55% single-family, 45% multifamily, to 45% single-family, 55% multifamily. This mix better reflects what we know about changing demographics, energy availability, and transportation options. I personally could live with a 50/50 mix if and only if it were monitored through Pillar 7 activities. If you must expand, do so only on exception lands. I would also point out that a reversal of this mix is only going to change the mix over 20 years at the margin by 3%. These are not long-term, big consequences. With respect to industrial expansion, avoid this if at all possible.
Thank you, Sean.
Well, that's a good place to finish.
Mia Nelson, next, followed by Rob Zaco.
I'm Mia Nelson, representing 1,000 Friends of Oregon, 220 East 11th in Eugene. First, I would really like to thank all of you and your staff for the extended opportunity to participate in the Envision Eugene project. It has been a real honor and a pleasure to serve on the CRG and the TRG committees. I'd like to let you know that 1,000 Friends does support the industrial land analysis, including the recommendation for the large-lot expansion. However, if the county moves forward to provide 200 acres of large-lot rail-served industrial land in Goshen, well, they did initiate that proposal last week, we hope you will consider a compensating adjustment since Goshen could partially meet Eugene's need for such land. We also support the public land analysis, most of the residential analysis, but with two major exceptions. First, we believe the Clear Lake Residential Expansion does not meet state requirements. It would consume farmland despite non-resourced land alternatives. It would also create potential conflict with adjacent industrial lands. Second, we believe that the city is under-planning for its future single-family detached and its multifamily needs. We strongly urge you to move to at least a 50/50 mix. I hope you will read the materials I handed out and consider that powerful demographic changes will alter our future housing markets. The graphics on the handout show that the coming huge increases in retiring seniors and their strong downsizing preferences, and that is just one of several market forces that will combine to drive multifamily development. But even a large shift in new construction mix will have little effect on Eugene's overall housing stock. Your staff prepared the color handout I gave to you. That's a staff product, and it shows Eugene's housing stock is now 61% single-family detached. Even at a 50/50 mix, 20 years from now, we would still be at 59%. That's almost 100%. That’s almost no change from the current mix. And that’s because this is a lot like trying to change your GPA in your last semester in college. It’s really hard to move the overall average at the last minute. And why does all this matter? Mainly because the consequences of under-planning for your multifamily are a lot worse than under-planning for single-family. If it proves necessary at your five-year review, you can always tack more single-family land onto your UGB if you need to. But you can’t do that with multifamily. You’ve decided that’s all going to fit inside the UGB. It needs to be close-in, near good transit, schools, and other urban services, and it often requires more planning to address the neighborhood compatibility concerns. If you aim high now and aggressively plan for increased multifamily, you will be ahead of the curve at your five-year review, and you will be ready to keep Eugene’s building community competitive with current housing trends while also preserving neighborhood compatibility. Thanks.
Thank you. Rob Zaco is next, followed by Scott Coleman.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I’m Rob Zaco. I’m a citizen of Eugene. I live in the Amazon Neighborhood. I’m speaking tonight as a citizen, although I wear many hats. I was a member of the Community Resources Group early on, but a job in DLCD, working for, pardon me, a job in Salem, working for DLCD, took me away from that. There are three things I want to share with you tonight. The first is just to commend the City Manager, the staff, the members of the CRG for what I experienced as a very fruitful process, a collaborative process, not perfect, not done exactly the way I would do it, but compared to how we’ve done things in Eugene in the past, quite commendable. So, I commend everybody involved in that. Secondly, I want to share with you, many years ago, as part of a small discussion, and Mayor, you may have been part of that as well, of some community leaders. We were talking about buildable lands and urban growth boundaries and stuff like that, and Terry Moore, as I’m sure you know, came to talk to us about this and try to explain it to us. And if I remember correctly, what stuck with me is he said, yes, in Oregon, we have a 20-year buildable land supply, and that means three years. You’ve got on-the-books 20 years’ worth of land that, in theory, could be built upon, but for a variety of practical reasons, much of that land can’t be built on today, and that’s okay. We don’t actually need 20 years of land today. If we had 20 years of land today that could be built on, it would swamp the market, and we wouldn’t know what to do with it. What he said is you need to have enough land to sort of have a fluid land market, and 20 years of theoretical buildable land translates to about three years’ practical is fine. What that tells me is that, good news, you have a policy decision before you. There’s not a exact science to this of numbers, and so you can probably choose some of the different points of view you hear tonight of what you think makes the most sense for our community, and your staff will make that happen and defend that, and that will be fine. The third thing I want to share with you is that this is neither the beginning nor the end. We, as a community, are engaged in a process, I hope, to get better, to better envision our future and to make it happen. When I first moved to this town and got involved in politics, the growth management study was taking place, and that was really how I started learning about all this land use stuff. And we have the growth management policies. Not a perfect process by any means. There was disagreements after that of what we agreed to, and we’ve fought those battles for the last 15 years or so. As I noted, Envision Eugene is an excellent process, but by no means the end. I don’t believe we’ve had all the information that we need. We don’t know about the transportation system and the cost of that. They’ll come out in the transportation system planning work and other staff work. And something that I’ve been helping with, the scenario planning, will bring some new tools to bear for the next couple of years. It’ll give you a better sense of the cost and benefits of growth. So, good job, keep going. Thank you.
Next is Scott Coleman, followed by Alma Jesus.
My name’s Scott Coleman. I live in Eugene, but I’m one of the landowners on Clear Lake Road that you have designated. Looking forward to putting maybe residential areas. And the property is located south of Clear Lake Road, west, first property out from the UGB. So, it looks like one way or the other, this is going to happen to my property. I’m fine with it, but I would caution you about residential right there, simply because right across the street, we have heavy industry, meaning timber mills, and a pipe company that cuts corrugated pipe. And when that saw goes off, it’ll rattle your fillings. So, if you have residences right there, it could be an issue for you. I have a good idea for you. You’ve got 70 acres downtown called the Lane County Fairgrounds. It’s been a problem for years from while, from horses and cattle going in there with problems with the creek. The buildings are in somewhat disrepair. There’s been talk for a long time about how it’s not a good place for a fairground. You have one chance, in this kind of an acquisition, to move the fairgrounds out near the airport, where I envision a maybe convention center. You also have, I believe, upwards of 200 acres that you, the city, have bought around the city pond area south of my property. So, you’ve already got 200 acres there with ponds in it. You also have an access, green access, if you look on the map, that goes all the way up to Clear Lake Road. Instead of having Lane County Fairgrounds on a two-lane quagmire 13th Avenue, put it next to Highway 99, where you’ve got a four-lane north-south, close to Beltline Road within, say, a minute, where you have an east-west. You’ve got one chance to do this. I really commend you on looking forward and blocking off an area all at once so you can put in city services, public transportation, and not be fighting over every lot inch by inch, which sort of seems to be the history of the way we expand the urban growth boundaries. By doing it in a large section like this, you can actually plan to make that a very useful and multi-use area. But again, maybe you want to, you know, check the sound out, out there, especially if you designate residences next to an industrial area, because they’re not going to enjoy that saw. You have a train issue. So, gee, it seems like I’ve already used up my three minutes. Did your thing break here?
Thank you.
Anyway, thank you. But envision an airport with a hotel-convention-center fairgrounds right there in the same place. The traveling suit coming into Eugene has to go all the way downtown to find a place to stay.
Thank you. Alma Jesus is next, followed by, it looks like, Brent McLean.
My name is Alma Jesus. I live in Ward 4 at 610 Palomino Drive in Eugene. I am testifying in support of the City Manager’s Envision Eugene recommendation, including the recommendation for 400-500 acre expansion of the urban growth boundary for industrial land. This is about more than just the urban growth boundaries expansion. This is about the future creation of jobs and community cultivation. Expanding the urban growth boundary will give Eugene the competitive edge it needs to attract employers and start creating jobs for revenue growth in our community. I’ve collected over 150 business cards from local community members. These cards represent over 150 community members who believe in the importance of job creation and support the expansion of the urban growth boundary. I give you each a map which plots the supporters in their respective wards. You will notice support for this proposal is widespread throughout our community. Thank you very much.
Brent McLean is next, followed by Ralph Partial.
Good evening. My name is Brent McLean. I’m in the Willaquenzi Neighborhood with the Honorable George Polling. Thank you. I really do appreciate your time that you people spend. I was blessed to spend 18 months in the ECLAP process, which was the precursor to Envision Eugene in it. I was appointed by the Commercial Investment Division of the Lane County Real Estate Brokers to be a sitting member on that process. I felt the 18 months of time was well-spent to better understand our needs at this, as this great community moves forward. I truly considered it to be an honor, especially once our work was completed to have it unanimously approved by the council and the mayor. A respectful committee which listened to both sides. As I learned, the process, the pitfalls cannot be, you have to follow safe harbor to miss the pitfalls in this methodology for the estimated need in all of our lands. Being respectful to safe harbor, the rule that you need to approve, if I remembered correctly, in this process, when we followed safe harbor, was 1,850 acres of a need. I tried to attend the Envision Eugene process but became very disenchanted after the third meeting. I might not be the smartest tack in the box, but it was apparent to me that a lot of uninformed public tried to unwind what ECLAP’s determination was. Countless hours were spent drafting this 1,850-acre need. This is not an exact science. We need to ensure that there are enough lands to develop wisely. We have a great workforce in our city, but not the land to feed the force. If we don’t, the smaller bedroom communities like Benita and Junction City will keep growing, and they are, towards our city without the regard for minimum standards. The UGB expansion, there is no guarantee it will be built. Put the land on the shelf doesn’t mean it’ll be built. Most of those factors, we have no control over. I’m in support of the City Manager’s recommendation for at least 400-500 acres or more of large-track industrial land, and I mean 20-100 acre sites. We’ve had this significant shortage for many years. Without this land, we simply cannot attract living wage jobs to Eugene. I support much more land than the City Managers brought up. Mitigation of brownfields or an industrial land bank should not be given serious consideration. They are too costly, and the land bank would take years to produce results. Without this expansion, we will continue this crisis. I urge you to move forward as quickly as the process will allow.
Thank you.
And expand this long overdue UGB expansion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ralph Partial is next, followed by Phil Farrington.
Thank you, Ralph Partial, 2568 Elysium, Eugene. Thank you for your service. You make a difference up there. I wish to thank all the individual parties of Envision Eugene and the process as a wonderful collaboration and an example of what can be done if we come together on a common goal. I think it was a wonderful process. I was not involved in it, but I watched it from the outside, and it was wonderful to see that happen. I moved to Eugene in 1970, and I run a small business here with 25 employees and 25 families. And I’m concerned that I have, two of my three adult children had to leave this area in order to find jobs in their field. That bothers me, and it should bother you also, that we do not have living wage jobs here for young adults going forward. Those 25 families are producing children that will need jobs in this town, and without the foresight of you in looking for industrial lands that we can bring large wage-earning employers here, then we will fail as a community. We’re in desperate straits now, and it circles around jobs. You, as a council, can make a difference. I want to thank you for all that you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Phil Farrington is next, followed by Clayton Walker.
Evening, Mayor and Councilors. Philip Farrington, 1160 Monroe Street, Ward 1. I’d like to thank all of you, the City Manager who’s not here, and the staff who participated in this process. I mean, I’m pretty amazed, having gone through a long-range planning process and nary a pitchfork or a torch in sight. It’s just remarkable. You know, I think this is a really exceedingly modest proposition before you, and I think I encourage all of you to support it. It’s not everything that I would necessarily select. You know, I can quibble about different things in the proposals. I am not yet drinking the Multway Boulevard Kool-Aid, but, you know, I might get there yet. But I think, you know, the proposals before you and the pillars that you’ve constructed here are sound. They’re ones that you need to build upon, and without a doubt, you know, the expansion for job growth, I think, is essential. It really is a modest proposal before you. I can envision a whole lot more, and really even the county’s efforts to try and bring in more land along I-5 and with rail access is a different kind of an animal than what we’re talking about in a different location, in a different market, than maybe what you’re talking about here in Eugene. So, I’d encourage you really to, you know, keep those kind of separate things separate. Take this modest proposal and build upon it. Thank you very much.
Clayton Walker is next, followed by Gary Wildish.
Clayton Walker. I live in Mike Clark’s Ward, and I’m here today to support the City Manager’s position, and especially the industrial lands component of that. I’ve been involved in commercial real estate and development since 1971 and have developed a lot of positions regarding is there enough or not. We have, in our office, which is, I founded in 1979, regularly people coming that there’s not enough, there’s not a parcel large enough of industrial property. They immediately go. They don’t even, it doesn’t get past the inquiry stage. Same thing is true in terms of residential land, for that matter, and to be able to develop large parcels in a very beautiful way requires more than just five, 10 lot subdivisions. As I developed parcels of 10 and 60 and 70 acres, you need that size to develop a great community, and we don’t have them. There aren’t any out there, and we need them. Far as that goes, beyond that, I think we’re doing a great job. I really appreciate the work that was done on this program. I would also add that the need is for adding flexibility to the code. We can gain a lot of efficiencies, we can gain a lot of progress, and watch, and respond to the market better if we can get a little more flexibility in the code, and I think that is just as important as adding more land. Thank you.
Gary Wildish is next, followed by Laura Potter.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I’m Gary Wildish. I live at 2424 Quince. I’m in Santa Clara. I would like to thank the City Manager and staff for all the effort that they put forward, because without them, the process wouldn’t have gone well. But I thought the process was pretty amazing. I knew a lot of people took shots at you, but, you know, you’re stuck to your guns, and I really appreciate that, because this is one of those that I thought was that important. I support the City Manager’s recommendations, and I don’t see it as being a huge thing. I think it’s something that has been needed to be done for many years. I feel the seven pillars had the support of most everybody that was on the CRG. I made most of those meetings, so I, too, had put in a few hours, and that was the good experience. I support the housing mix. I think it’s reasonable. You’re going to be wrong, no matter how you choose, because you and I do not know what’s going to happen in the next five, 10, 15, 20 years, and something that happens across the world is going to dictate to you and I what might happen. Things, we are affected all over the world by the different economies. I support the commercial land solution, the fact that we’re talking about making available within the urban growth boundary nearly 600 acres of commercial land, but please remember, where will that land come from? It’s going to come from residential, and it’s going to come from industrial. I was on the Industrial Lands Committee, and thanks to the staff and the incredible support that we had, we got to look at every parcel of land available in the UGB that was 20 acres or more. It’s not a very long list, and the amazing constraints on those parcels. And we know there’s a number of businesses here in Eugene. One has had to find land outside of Eugene to expand. We’re not able to use one parcel, that I’m familiar with, 76 acres. Very unfortunate. Thanks to all that information we received in that meeting, I was convinced that the few parcels that we do have in the 20-acre category are totally inadequate for what’s necessary for us to be competitive in the market. So, I support the City Manager’s recommendation on industrial lands. In fact, as I tend to agree with the gentleman before me, there’s probably only half enough. But this is a reasonable But this is a reasonable solution, and I hope that you can support our best outcomes in the city manager's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Potter is next, followed by Rob Bennett.
My name is Laura Potter. I live at 4016 Josh Street. I'm testifying this evening on behalf of the Eugene Area Chamber of Commerce, but I'm also speaking on behalf of myself and other young professionals in Eugene. I want to thank you, especially the city manager and the staff who worked on this Envision Eugene process. It was a really good process. It allowed so many community members to participate, and it was really valuable for a lot of us. I've been working on this project since the ECLAS committee started about four years ago now, and I'm really pleased, after so much work, to be here tonight speaking in support of this proposal. I think it's a really good culmination of all of that work, and I'm really, just really happy to be able to come out in support of it this evening. Job growth is one of the biggest priorities of the chamber, and rightly so. A strong economy with robust jobs is the foundation of so many of our community's priorities. It is the foundation for tax revenue, money for schools, parks, bike paths, infrastructure, including roads and transit. But more so, it's the foundation of a healthy, growing community. It is for these reasons that myself and the chamber and other members of our community are here tonight in support of John Race's Envision Eugene proposal. This recommendation, which is the product of thousands of hours of community work, addresses those needs for jobs, with a much-needed proposed expansion for both industrial land and land for housing. Both are really important going forward for our community. Yet at the same time, it assumes aggressive redevelopment, both along transit corridors for multifamily and for commercial. This recommendation is comprehensive, reasonable, and it deserves your unanimous support. It supports the needs of a vibrant, growing community and offers a promising future for all of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Rob Bennett is next, followed by John Lawless.
Good evening. My name is Rob Bennett. I live at 60 Fairway Loop, Ward 5. Thanks for allowing me to speak tonight. I want to stand here and vocalize support for the city manager's recommendation for specifically the industrial expansion, 400 to 500 acres of land. It's my opinion that in order to attract employers to provide jobs for our community that are attractive to, you know, skilled workforce, especially people in my demographic, we need available land. And if you look at, you know, it's kind of a complicated issue about our inventory until you look at a map. And when you look at a map, what you see is an inventory of small, many small, non-contiguous parcels in West Eugene. Once you identify what the larger parcels are, your eyes go to the north part of the urban growth boundary off of Highway 99, and there's a handful of parcels, the only parcels, that are larger than 20, 25 acres. Once you then overlay the wetlands on the map, you see that the wetlands are in every single parcel, and many of those wetlands are protected indefinitely. Some of them have the capacity to be mediated, but they're very cost prohibitive. And so, you know, when a company is looking at Eugene as a possible solution for relocation, they're going to look at our competitors also. And if our competitors have an inventory of available land that does not require a very costly solution, they're going to naturally select that. And so I believe it's in our best interest to expand the boundary very modestly, it's a 3% expansion, to create large tract industrial parcels that are shovel-ready and that can be attractive to potential companies looking to locate in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. John Lawless is next, followed by Sue Pritchard.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors. I'm John Lawless with TBG Architects and Planners, 132 East Broadway, Suite 200, Eugene. I'm here tonight on behalf of my client, the Bennett family. First, thank you very much for all the time that you've taken and the effort you've put into contributing to this Envision Eugene process. It's long overdue. My client recently sent you a letter explaining in detail what I've come here tonight to summarize. During this big-picture envisioning process, we support the city manager's recommendations regarding land for commercial jobs, and we also support and recommend providing enough flexibility within the language of the final recommendations and implementation strategies to allow for the assessment of smaller, underutilized, and undeveloped parcels that are other than industrial lands. All of these, of course, within the UGB. Many such properties are close to the greater downtown area, key transit corridors, and are existing commercial support areas. They have things going for them already. Adding language to allow the evaluation of these other, often inappropriately designated smaller parcels could help provide needed land for commercial jobs in areas that would be better utilizing existing infrastructure, urban amenities, and improve the efficiency of public services and facilities, and appropriately expand existing employment and commercial services close to downtown residential neighborhoods and major transit systems. Thank you for your help.
Thank you. Sue Pritchard is next, followed by Ed McMahon.
Hello, thank you. My name is Sue Pritchard. I live at 2671 Emerald Street. I'm in Allen Zelenka's Ward. First of all, I want to thank you for your affirmative capstone decision. It's good for downtown, and it fits perfectly with Envision Eugene. It's a multifamily development on a transit corridor and a core commercial area. I think that's what every city today hopes for, so thank you. In speaking to the recommendations, I'm speaking for myself. I fully support the city manager's recommendations as expressed in the community vision. I'd like to stop there and save time, but I can't, because like everybody else, I have an opinion about one part of it. Planning responsibly has been challenging and is complicated, but the diverse perspectives are working together, and significant compromises have been made by everyone. There is one important thing, however, that I want to say about industrial land expansion. And because of my career as a commercial real estate broker, I feel like I'm in a position where I can feel entitled to give you my opinion about this. I'm deeply concerned that we're not being visionary enough in the industrial land need projections. The TRG's analysis and the city manager's recommendation are based on projected job growth, which is conservative in how it addresses both refilling previous jobs that were lost and new job needs that come with increased population. With the current recommendation, I do not believe we are providing enough choice to the very industries that bring some of the highest-paid jobs to the community. What this projection does not consider is something that I've mentioned to you in other work sessions, and it's probably a little bit boring to hear, but I'm going to say it again, that businesses need options in order to thrive. Even businesses that are already located in Eugene, they need options. They need to be able to choose from a few sites in their acreage category, not just one site, not just two, but having at least three or four sites to choose from. It allows them to tailor their location to their business needs and to the needs of their employees. Think of the high-paying businesses that we've lost to other jurisdictions because we did not have an adequate supply of land: Down-to-Earth, Yogi-T, Grain Millers, Peace Health, Rexius, Richardson Sports. These are just a few, and they're the obvious ones, but there are more. We absorbed nearly 1,200 industrial acres over the past 20 years. We have a current supply of 176 acres in the UGB and a proposed expansion of 475. That makes a total of 651. That 651 acres projected for the next 20 years is just a hair over a half of what we used in the last 20 years. This, therefore, in my opinion, is a conservative recommendation. But this is part of the compromise, and I accept that recommendation, and I'm happy to compromise, because many others in this room have had to do the same thing, and we've all done it for the greater good. I would like to also add my deep appreciation to the city manager for setting up this process of Envision Eugene and to the unbelievably high-quality staff who have really made it happen. Thank you.
Ed McMahon, followed by Steve Goldman.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Ed McMahon, Executive Director of the Home Builders Association of Lane County. And I'm here this evening to encourage you to support the city manager's Envision Eugene recommendations for jobs and for housing. Several community members have invested countless hours in this process, and even though the recommendations fall short of what we expected, they represent a community balance that will allow us to move forward. The only other alternative is to go back to our old ways, draw a line in the sand, and let the courts figure it out. We all lose if we go that route. I encourage you to approve the recommendations and to allow staff to move forward with the implementation process. Know that all seven pillars will be honored during this process. I believe that one of the most important pillars is number seven, flexible and adaptable implementation. Within five years, we'll know a lot of information that we don't have right now: neighborhood planning, transportation planning, new stormwater regulations, and several other items. We'll be ready, and we'll need to adjust for that when we have the information in hand. Otherwise, a lot of the work that we've done to this point will be lost. I would also like to take this opportunity to thank the city manager for a very innovative process, one that I really am honored to be a part of and one that I believe brought the community a lot closer together. I also want to thank the staff that worked so hard on this. A job well done. And I also want to thank the mayor and council for this time to speak to you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Goldman is next, followed by Robert Catoche.
Good evening. My name is Steve Goldman. I live at 1495 West Hilliard Lane, Eugene. I'm in Ward 7, Andrea Ortiz's Ward. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak this evening. I prepared a letter that I handed to Chris in the back at the beginning, and I also gave a draft of it to Andrea and a few others of you on Wednesday when I saw you. I have never addressed the council before, but I felt compelled to do it tonight, because I think this is such an important decision you're making here about Envision Eugene, to chart a future course that's truly in alignment with the seven pillars. And I'm asking the council to direct staff to prepare an alternative that does not expand the UGB, at least not for residential, because it's not necessary and it sends a bad message. That proposal is in conflict with a pillar to promote compact urban development and efficient transportation options. It's in conflict with a pillar to protect, restore, and enhance natural resources, and it's in conflict with the 20-minute neighborhood objective of the Climate and Energy Action Plan. So it sends a bad message, and Eugene can do better than that. The UGB can be expanded later when it actually is necessary to expand it. The housing trend data in Eugene and nationally, and that data is in this letter that came from your own planning department, your own data shows a dramatic shift in the housing pattern both in Eugene and nationally away from single-family development. There's been a very dramatic shift since 2006 towards multifamily and higher-density development. If you allow development to take place out by Gimble Hill Road and Clear Lake Road, that is going to be auto-dependent housing. It's far from center of town. People are going to have to get in their cars and use oil. That's not where we want to go. I grew up in Los Angeles. I worked in San Jose. I saw those areas change from beautiful places to suburban sprawl. I would hate to see that happen in Eugene. Eugene can do better than that. So what we need here is a paper alternative that shows an alternative to the expansion of the UGB, where the growth could actually go. You can actually figure it out on paper and show the policy changes that allow that to happen. We need a paper alternative. That's what all 30 years in government I did. We put alternatives out there, not just one option. We need multiple alternatives to choose from, and then let the people of this community decide the future they want for this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Catoche is next, followed by Susan Tavakolian.
Hi, I'm Bob Catoche. I live in Eugene and on McMorrit Lane, which is one of the areas affected by the proposed expansion of the urban growth boundary. And I don't carry a pitchfork with me, but I do represent the neighbors on McMorrit Lane. I have a petition that was signed by 14 of the residents on McMorrit Lane, representing seven homes, and we really have a number of concerns about it, and we urge you to reject the proposed expansion of the urban growth boundary into the Gimble Hill, Bailey Hill area. That's really our basic position, and I'd like to give the petition to you. And there really are four particular reasons that we feel that it's inappropriate. And actually, before I get started, the one thing I would like to say is I really do appreciate the Envision Eugene staff. We went to the public forums. They were very respectful. The information presented was very clear, very organized. And I particularly want to thank Allison Hansen for her work with our neighborhood group. She came out on a Sunday evening, which was, you know, way beyond the call of duty, to meet with us, and appreciated her input and the information that she gave us. One of the main things that we're very concerned about is that the expansion into the Gimble Hill, Bailey Hill area will result in contamination of the groundwater. And I don't think that was really considered in the development and planning, that there is, it really is the headwaters of the East and South Willow Creek, which flows into the protected Willow Creek wetlands and the nature conservancy's protected natural area, which is north of Gimble Hill and west of Bailey Hill Road. And it's, in the wintertime, it's a swampy area. I mean, it really is a wetland, and this flows into some, you know, pretty pristine areas. And so we're real concerned about if there are increased housing, single-family homes, that it would result in a contamination of the groundwater. And I hope that that's going to be considered, that there'll be an environmental impact study in terms of what the potential impact would be on wetlands. The other area, reason that we're concerned is we do believe that our properties have a very low potential for residential development. We're constrained by steep slopes, deed restrictions, wetland areas, as I mentioned, creeks, numerous springs, and the location of current dwelling units. And because of that, I think getting utilities out there, particularly sewer lines, is going to be quite expensive, and I don't think a good use of limited city resources. And the other, I think, probably main factor that you have to consider is the recommended split of 55% to 45%, which was discussed before, and we believe the 50/50 split would be best. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Tavakolian, and followed by John Winquist.
Good evening. I'm Susan Tavakolian, co-president of the League of Women Voters of Lane County. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on the Envision Eugene recommendations. We appreciate the exhaustive process that has led to the recommendations, particularly the transparency and public outreach provided by numerous council work sessions, active advisory groups, electronic newspapers and resources, community forums, and public hearings. With regard to the land for jobs, we support the recommendation to meet commercial land needs within the existing UGB and the recommendation to expand the UGB by approximately 475 acres near the airport in order to provide 12 medium-large parcels for industrial development. It's imperative that the city also take the necessary steps to ensure that these additional medium-large industrial sites are not partitioned or redesignated for other uses. As proposed, the Eugene Airport would abut the UGB if the boundary is expanded to include the larger industrial sites. We strongly suggest that the city investigate the feasibility of including the airport property within the UGB in order to better protect this critical regional transportation resource. With regard to land for housing, we support the recommended goal of a housing mix of 55% single-family housing and 45% multifamily housing for new dwelling units. We're pleased with the recommendation to accommodate future multifamily housing within the existing UGB. We also support the recommendation to accommodate new single-family housing by expanding the UGB in two locations by a total of approximately 350 acres. We endorse using effective methods to encourage efficient and flexible infill on the land that is currently designated for residential purposes. We're pleased that the recommendation includes strategies for monitoring and evaluating the actual development and redevelopment that will occur as the plan is implemented and for considering adjustments to address future situations. A very important aspect of plan implementation is determining the timing and financing of the construction of public facilities to serve newly-developed areas. Finally, we recognize that there will undoubtedly be challenges as the council and the community work to honor all seven pillars and their related objectives and strategies. It is truly a comprehensive plan that encompasses goals with different emphases, excuse me, that will need to be balanced and integrated. Thank you for your past and future. Thank you for your past and future efforts.
John Winquist is next, followed by Richard Herman.
Hi, I'm John Winquist, and I live in the Bailey Hill Gimble Hill Expansion Study Area. And I guess I'd like to add my thanks to staff, too. Alyssa has just been tremendous in answering questions, giving answers that are understood, and now we'll work on answers we like. But it's truly a pleasure to work with the staff. I was a participant also in the ECLIM process, so I think I understand what we're up against in making decisions. And I also think I understand that one of the reasons that we had to look at some of the areas we did was that they are impacted areas, they already have development, and I believe we're required to look at those first. But having said that, I think I'd like to offer some reasons why we ought to really think carefully about the Willow Creek headwaters in the Gimble Hill Bailey Hill area. There's about 100 houses there right now, something less than 100. We're proposing to put 400 there. It kind of seems to me to go against the notion of having spent millions and millions of dollars to purchase the wetlands that these properties basically feed. I'm guessing, I'm hoping, that we won't be back here in five years with the save with Willow Creek headwaters group. We're offering really to save it right now. By leaving most of it intact as it is, we would not be impacting the drainage into that area. The second part of the same issue is that within our area, most, all of the lots are fairly small. I'd say close to five acres, some slightly larger, and they've all got houses, all except for, I think I counted four or five. And those houses are all smack dab in the middle, because that's why people, including myself, bought there, built there, was seclusion. What that does, it makes it very hard to do any kind of reasonable planning for development. Sure, we can plunk some houses along the road, but it just doesn't lend itself to essentially functional planning. It also creates a density, I believe the staff is counting on a density somewhere around 2.5 per acre, residences per acre. That's really low, and I'm wondering if it should come out lower than that on some of the pieces of property. My alternative that I would suggest, and I obviously will suggest it to staff, my suggested alternative is that the Gimble Hill Bailey Hill area be restricted to those areas that can be fed with a gravity sewer. And other than that, that we look for a larger, more available area. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Richard Herman is next, followed by Tamara Erminger Underwood.
Good evening, Mayor Piercy and council members. My name is Richard Herman. I live at 2581 Borders Drive in Ward Seven. I'm also the executive director of Metropolitan Affordable Housing, a nonprofit housing provider in Eugene. I'm here speaking in support of the Envision Eugene draft recommendations, especially those recommendations related to providing affordable housing to all income levels. I appreciate this broader concept of subsidized and market-raised housing that is affordable to the various income levels that make up our community. Adding housing inventory at all levels has the impact of keeping overall rents lower. I would like to express Metro's appreciation for the demonstrated commitment the Eugene City Council and our community has made to providing housing to those most in need. Eugene has demonstrated that commitment through innovative programs like the Land Bank Program, funded through federal CDBG funds, provided construction dollars through the Home Program, and the property tax exemptions and system development waivers are two other critical programs that have allowed this community to build very high-quality, affordable housing. The Envision Eugene draft document outlines other innovative ideas, like focusing more on transportation corridors and searching for sites that are most appropriate for multifamily housing. Thank you for your work and the work for many others in the community who spent countless hours creating this community vision. I don't think we'll ever have a perfect document, but I think the pillars that are created create the framework for sound future decisions. I urge you to adopt the recommendations to make this vision possible. And finally, I will send all of you an invitation to the Willaquenzy Crossing Grand Opening on June 26. Mayor Piercy will be there. And we have 56 households, 16 of those 56 dedicated to those with developmental disabilities. And then following the groundbreaking, we're going to have an ice cream social sponsored by The Grange. They're going to be celebrating their renovation that was funded in part by neighborhood funds, so come and celebrate.
Thank you. Tamara Erminger Underwood is next, followed by Dave Hauser.
Hello, council and mayor. My name is Tamara Erminger Underwood, and I live in Mr. Brown's Ward. As a citizen and a business owner, I am here in support of Envision Eugene. I feel that this plan is reasonable and responsible. It relies on densifying our city's core and expanding our growth boundary by only 3% while the population is expected to expand by 20%. This reflects Eugene's values on using our land wisely and efficiently. As the owner of Bagel Sphere, I am heavily invested in the economic success of downtown and of the business environment along West 11th. My husband and I have made economic investments in three retail locations in Eugene, and we understand the challenges of the local small business owner. We also understand the challenge of trying to expand our locally grown family business, having recently purchased land on West 11th to move our commercial bakery from Springfield back into Eugene. It was challenging to find property that suited our need for both industrial and commercial. There is a need for flexible zoning to allow a mix for, or industrial with storefront retail, similar to what is allowing the Whittaker to currently blossom. Thank you for the positive steps that you've recently taken in approving the Catstone project. Actions similar to what you took last week will be required to make the policies in the Envision Eugene proposal a reality. I hope that council will continue to support such projects with future actions that allow other responsible developments to occur. In addition to providing incentives to redevelopment along transit corridors, it is critical that Eugene has the transportation infrastructure. The expansion of the AMX line is one such opportunity. Great transit systems define great cities. This plan has all the components needed to move Eugene forward as a great city. I urge you to please support the city manager's proposal as recommended. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave Hauser is next, followed by Lisa Arkin.
Mayor and council, Dave Hauser, 2168 Elkhorn Drive. I also work at the Eugene Chamber of Commerce. Like a lot of other folks, I want to acknowledge the good work of our community in this Envision Eugene process. Certainly, great kudos to city staff, the city manager, but a rather Herculean amount of work on the part of a lot of citizens as part of the ECLIM committee, the Community Resource Group, the Technical Resource Group, and all of the citizens that participated in this process to make their input known. I've spent a 30, I've had a 30-year career in economic development, 20 of it here in Eugene, 10 in university communities like Ames, Iowa, and Boulder, Colorado, before I came here. And so connecting vital local economy to the livability of our community is not a new notion for me. These recommendations help move us in that direction in a very, very measured way. Two things we know in economic development is all of the companies that are here are existing employers, are other communities' economic development prospects. And having an adequate amount of land for local companies to grow onto is an important part of our JEO regional economic development strategy. You've heard a number of cases where local companies who want to be here had to leave in order to grow and expand, and that just shouldn't happen. Second, having a good plan that informs our land use needs is also important. So the JEO regional strategy sets a foundation for us to move forward with our economy against the backdrop of having lost 16,500 jobs since 2008, and in the backdrop against a growing wage gap from the rest of the state and our community. That plan, these modest supplies of lands, will help us address those important deficits. So again, I appreciate the good work of our community, the measured approach embedded in all of the recommendations around jobs, homes, and lands for parks and schools. 91% of the total expected job creation happens inside the UGB, 100% of the commercial job creation inside the UGB, nearly 100% of the total government jobs inside the UGB, 72% of industrial jobs, which is not the greatest recommendation. Industrial jobs are not smokestacks, they're jobs that represent all of our community, 72% inside the UGB, 100% of the multifamily, 90% of single-family homes. That's a measured approach that fits well for our community. Let's embrace these recommendations and move forward with the good work that we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Last up, Lisa Arkin.
I'm speaking on behalf of Beyond Toxics, a nonprofit located here in Eugene. And I'm speaking not to support or to object to the city manager's recommendation, but rather to request that you city councilors address a serious gap in the underlying assumptions and principles shaping these recommendations, particularly those recommendations having to do with expansion in the West Eugene area. The city of Eugene has adopted the triple bottom line tool to integrate social equity principles into sustainability initiatives. Sometimes we link social equity to equal wage earning, but social equity is also tied to the principle of guaranteeing all communities the equal right to clean air, water, and public health. This is called environmental justice. In West Eugene, we have neighborhoods that are disproportionately exposed to air and water pollution. Residents in West Eugene tend to be lower-income and working-class families, and many minority families. 26 to 38% of the residents in the area are at or below poverty level compared to 17% in the 97405 area code, or ZIP code. They are also likely to have less opportunities to access healthcare, which is a problem since we know that we have a high, we have high rates of childhood asthma here in Eugene, particularly West Eugene. 99% of all the toxics that are reported to the Eugene Toxics Right to Know program are located in 97402. That's about a half a million pounds per year of air toxics emitted to the air in West Eugene, a half a million pounds compared to five pounds in all the other ZIP codes combined. Many of the heaviest industrial polluters are located along Highway 99. Residents in the area describe about how living next to industrial facilities changes their lifestyle. Some have to keep their windows shut all summer long. Some can't take their children to the neighborhood park to play because the air smells so foul. Some don't want to ride on the bike paths provided by the city because dirty particles from smokestacks drop upon them. And one mother described how her child gets bloody noses and vomits on stagnant air days when the inversion keeps our air un-moving. And many of these residents shared their stories in the recent Environmental Justice Bus Tour, of which I have submitted a copy for each of you. There are nine heavy industrial polluters, plus the airport, within 1.5 kilometers of the proposed residential and school expansion areas on Clear Lake Road. What chronic low-level synergistic toxic exposures with those families who move into the area face from existing and new industries? Beyond Toxics recommends that the city incorporate air toxics data and environmental health research into all land use decisions. Please refer to page 10 in your booklet.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to thank everyone very much for their time and coming to speak to us tonight on Envision Eugene. This is a very important step for us. I want to, again, and we've done it before, but I don't think we can say it enough, thank you, all those people who put in so many hours into, many, 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 many hours into Envision Eugene, and a thanks to our staff and to our Sustainability Commission for weighing in and the work that they've done. We appreciate very much. Counselor Colley.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to add my thanks to all the people that took part, not only tonight, but in this long, long process that we've just been through. And particularly, I want to thank city staff and our city manager, John Reese, for taking on this effort like we asked you to and doing such an outstanding job on it. I do have a couple of questions, and if you have the answer right off the top of your head, that'd be fine. If not, if we could have it by Wednesday's work session. On pillar number seven, in reference to flexibility, what is the current trigger mechanism to take another look at where we are as far as the available land?
Emily, answer the legal question for what's currently allowed as opposed to what we might be putting in the pillar process.
Sit down.
Yeah. Currently, cities are required to look at that every time they go through periodic review, which on paper in the law is every 10 years. I think, you know, from our own experience, that the state has been unable to keep up with that schedule. But under the law, every 10 years, a jurisdiction is supposed to look at and improve up its ability to serve its population for a 20-year period of time. And Lisa, you can talk, correct me if I'm wrong, pillar seven has certain triggers, five-year and 10-year triggers, where the city would be committing, and we would do it through planned policy language, to take a look and see how we are performing compared to the assumptions that we would be making today. And if we are performing differently than we anticipated, changes would be necessary. We would be, these would be self-imposed requirements.
Okay, so if the, and we're currently looking at putting five and 10 years into pillar seven, is that correct?
It is, and there's still a tremendous amount of work to be done in terms of what exactly will be included in the pillar seven. We actually had a meeting today talking about some of those, and we met with a few members from the community to discuss what kinds of teeth, if you would, we can put into that to make sure that we have the right thresholds identified. Should the threshold be around number of multifamily units, certain kinds of density? Should it be around how much of the land consumption we're doing? And so we want to make sure that we have that. That'll be part of the discussion that we have going forward with the council.
So if by some miracle, the world economy turns around and we have a massive explosion of new companies coming in and current companies expanding and people moving in, in less than five years, is there something built in so we can trigger that mechanism earlier than the five years?
My attorney is grabbing the microphone.
The answer is, I mean, this could be answered by Lisa just as well. Of course, you know, you're the government, you can do whatever you want. You can do it again next year if you'd like. You might lose a lot of staff. But yeah, you absolutely can. You don't need a trigger. What this does is it, the pillar is intended to put these requirements into our plans so that frankly, citizens who are concerned that what we're doing right now has the wrong assumptions, they have some capacity for coming back to you and saying, okay, well, five years, we're going to look at this again, and you'll be responsible for doing it. But by all means, you can do it sooner if you'd like.
And if I could just add on to that, we certainly will be walking you through some of this when we come back on Wednesday with sort of the summary of the input we heard. But you heard tonight from a number of people looking at different sides of that, we don't know exactly what's going to happen demographically or in terms of job growth in our economy. We're trying to come up with the best plan that we can to meet the anticipated needs that we see. We also want to be prepared in the event that changes or that unforeseen circumstances have. So you highlighted one example. Another example could be that we land on a housing mix and then find out that in five years, we're consuming more multifamily than we ever thought we would, or less multifamily than we thought we would. Gives us the opportunity to look at that responsibly and make some adjustments.
Okay. All right, thank you. And then in reference to the proposed expansion of the UGB into the Gimble Hill Willow Creek headwater area, now, you were talking about X amount of acres being taken into the UGB in that area. Is that the amount of buildable acres, or is that the amount of total acres? And then we've got to look at how much of that is constrained because of the issue that they bring up, the headwaters of the Willow Creek, I'm sorry, the Willow Creek headwater area.
So I think we'll have the opportunity to get into this in more detail, but similar to, you might recall the city manager's recommendation around the industrial expansion, we're, we sort of identified a range of the need that we think we'll have, or that we do have. It's not clear exactly what that's going to look like because of the parcel size constraints that will be part of it. So in the Bailey Hill study, Gimble Hill study area, that is broader, a broader area that we believe we'll actually need in terms of acreage, but we need to spend more time analyzing. And in fact, one of the things we'll talk about Wednesday is that we need to do some additional wetlands inventory work in that area and also in the Clear Lake area. So we'll definitely be addressing that more on Monday, I'm sorry, on Wednesday.
As well as looking at perhaps maybe building in some sort of a buffer zone into the headwaters area.
That certainly can be part of the conversation.
Right. Thank you.
So before I call on everyone else, let's just remember that if you want to raise some questions for them to answer for the work session, but we are some questions for them to answer for the work session, but we are going to be having the work sessions.
And I will be leading with a brilliant PowerPoint, so.
Right.
That would answer everybody.
Counselor Farr.
Thank you, I have a series of questions. No, I just want to comment on the fact that the breadth of the people who worked on the CRG, I was in there from the beginning, and at the start, when I first saw the group of people, I could never have envisioned this night happening, where so many diverse people are, while not agreeing precisely on every single element, stepping forward and saying the city manager did a good job of bringing forward their recommendations. Just wanted to say that that wasn't easy, and several people have commended staff regarding the process and regarding all the hard work that went into this. It's been quite remarkable from the outset to get to this point right here, and I want to congratulate everybody involved, you guys over there. All right, good job.
Counselor Clark.
Thank you, mayor. I appreciate both the staff's work, all of the people who have worked so hard on this process all along, and certainly all the folks who came out to speak tonight. I too want to make sure that we're building in the pieces in pillar seven that are going to allow us to be effective there. I'd like to see some teeth in it. I think the very fact that you have such diverse points of view, as Ed McMahon and Sean Bowles here saying the same thing tells us that that's an important thing that we should be doing. I want to say that I'm glad we're finally here. I remember May 16 of 2007, exactly almost to the day, five years ago, was a budget committee meeting where I made a motion to add $200,000 to the city budget so that we could do a land study as a precursor to what we eventually ended up doing with ECLAP. And I remember a former colleague actually yelling at me for even making the motion. So it didn't pass either. But that seems like a very long time ago, and we've come a very long way. But that was only five years ago, and we've learned a lot since then. So I'd like to see us making sure that the stuff we put in pillar seven allows us for a very accurate capacity to change the things we need to within five years. Thank you.
Counselor Taylor.
Thank you. Sean Bowles has left, but I don't think he said he agreed with everything. I think he suggested that we have a different housing mix, which is what I certainly think we should do. It should be more like 55 multi and 45 single. But I especially want to commend Mr. Goldman, I think the name was, for his suggestion that we can, we need alternatives to expanding the UGB, and we need to let the public decide. There are other ways to do it. We don't know that we're going to need that much land. And we need to think about what kind of city we want to have rather than the, rather than what would be economically beneficial to some people. Thank you.
Counselor Ortiz.
Thank you, mayor. Sorry I came in late, folks. I was at the Bethel Budget Committee meeting. So I have a couple comments, and then I have a question. So as far as the housing mix goes, my belief is that the market will drive really eventually what the housing mix is going to be. This is a suggestion, and, you know, there's, not everybody agrees on everything, but this is the one thing that I think that, you know, it can be played with because there is flexibility in it. And I want to really appreciate Lisa for bringing up her Environmental Justice Tour. Can't say that I agree with everything that she says, but I do appreciate the work that Beyond Toxics does. And I do also have concerns about future issues as we look into bringing that in. So what I would like to see something of, you know, not maybe this week, but as we go down this road, with all the industrial that's out there, that is not in our city limits, so it's not in our toxics right to know language. We don't know what kind of toxics are out in that area. So I would hope that as we move down this road, that we can perhaps look at seeing how we can incorporate them into that program so that we know what we're talking about before we actually look at allowing that part of the community to become housing, because I do think, I think it's, there's some validity to what she has to say. Thank you.
We're going to wrap this up now, but I just wanted to make the point that having attended most of those CRG meetings, I know that everybody spent an incredible amount of that conversation talking about the kind of community they want to live in. And part of that has to do with preserving the things that we love and care about, and part of that has to do with creating future opportunity for the people who live here. And that was a broad conversation that was had and respected by all who participated. And I just want to say that what I appreciated the most about the whole process was I think that people were really talking with each other and really trying to work with each other to envision the best future we can for our community. So we'll continue this discussion very soon, and again, thank you, everyone, for being here this evening. So now we're going to go on to the final action item of the evening, which is an ordinance concerning infill compatibility standards. Assistant City Manager?
Tonight, we're asking you to take action on a package of code amendments related to infill compatibility standards for multifamily housing. The purpose of these amendments is to make changes and clarifications to the land use code that will improve neighborhood livability and implement strategies identified through Envision Eugene. As you might remember, we had a public hearing on April 16, and this is our return back to action.
And thank you for that.
Can I answer this here and can I answer any questions you might have?
For the public who's listening, this is another exercise which we had a lot of community input into and a lot of people working hard to come up with these standards. So this is a result of a long process and a lot of neighborhoods in our community have been waiting for and working for. So we want to acknowledge that. Want to put it on the table?
Sure.
I move to approve Council Bill 5069, the proposed ordinance concerning infill compatibility standards related to multifamily developments, multifamily zoning, garbage and recycling screening, and bicycle parking, as contained in Attachment D, as modified by Option A, contained in Attachment C.
Second.
Moved and seconded. So this is really about how we try to live more densely and protect the neighborhoods and the things that we really care about in those neighborhoods. And I think we're ready to vote on these. We've talked about them a long time. Please vote.
Mayor?
Yes. Do you want to talk first? Sorry.
I just wanted to point out that it just so happens that it's Attachment B that contains the ordinance, and we gave you the, in the suggested motion, it refers to Attachment D. I don't think there'd be any confusion over that, but just to make sure the motion's clear.
And one more piece of clarification, there's actually a new Attachment C at your places.
Here.
It doesn't have any substantive changes. There are minor revisions that were clarification based on city attorney's review. There's a couple added S's to make things plural, and a by, and I think a numerical reference that was changed, so.
So is there any thing that needs to be changed in the motion that was made?
No, just to clarify, I think with head nods, that you're talking about the Attachment C that was revised May 14, handed out tonight. And none of this was Council Brown's fault.
Shouldn't be Attachment D, but Attachment C.
That's right.
Option A still, though, right? Okay.
All right, everybody okay with this? All right, so I think you're ready to vote on it. Please vote. Aid in favor and unin opposition, it passes. Thank you all very much, and we're done with the business of this evening.